Call the order this special meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, September 18th, 2018.
City of East, please call roll.
Mayor Sead, here.
Council President Mark Olsett.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Russell.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Pachowinski, Tim Riappel.
Here.
Henry Tweeten, Mark Chalmers.
Those are the term quorum. Number one, presentation and discussion on classification and compensation study.
I told them to come down.
I think most of the people should probably be out of here by now. Everybody should be in here, so we could probably, probably work with that. But if you find me.
Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, we'll just get started with this. Again, we, we have Tessa Melvin here tonight. She's with David Drowan and Associates. She is the one that we have contracted with to provide the wage study, to see where we fit amongst cities of our, of similar size, similar circumstances, and in our general area, to see if, make sure that we are competitive. She has also done our, I always forget what it's called now, but we used to call it the CompWorth Study.
Pay Equity.
Pay Equity Study. And she has provided that as well, and that did come out favorable. Tessa was here once before to go through the draft study as far as what she'd found preliminary, preliminarily. We did have some questions and some further follow-up. We did have one, one position appeal. She has gone through that, and so she is here tonight again for the final report, to give that presentation and take any questions. If you remember, I'll just give just a slight background for Tessa. She has extensive experience as a city administrator and is now with David Drowan and Associates. So, she's very well qualified. So with that, I'll turn it over to her.
Um, a little bit, if you could, one on me. I am former City of East here, but one thing, just with David Drowan, I don't know if anybody remembers this, but we've been in the business for 20 years. He kind of started on the public civil engineer side, left city government, started on the finance side, just did TIF, Economic Development Fonds, and then our clients came to us and gave me HR help. So five years ago, we kind of started doing executive searches, some board studies, and now compensation studies. Just wanted to provide that. I think it's important. We have several clients on the avenues, for instance, and we're very accustomed of theirs. But I think one thing of us is people who actually have been in these seats, so we kind of understand jobs a little bit better, it's a little easier for us to class them, and we understand the role of the council and taxpayers. So, I gave a nice introduction on myself, our team, just other people that kind of help out in the area. But basically, kind of project summary, what did we do? What did we say we were going to do? A complete wage analysis for all physicians was done, a market analysis for comparable communities, we did wage, and then we did benefits to kind of do total compensation. So, what are you paying, and then what are your benefits? And we looked at all things from on-call pay, health insurance, dental, eye, vision, and some additional ones that we were looking specifically for. Then what we did is we benchmarked some jobs, and those were what we would consider hard to recruit, retain, and wanted to make sure all the unions represented. The only difference there is we go apples to apples. We actually send the job description to the entity and say, "This is our position here at East Grand Forks. What is it called in yours?" Because sometimes titles don't always match. Then we ask, "What's education experience needed in that position? How big is your department?" And then we also ask if they have any additional pay, and if they supervise how many. Because that allows us to look more apples to apples. These benchmark jobs are usually sometimes common across the board. That also helps us calibrate our wage scale, because we get the most apples to apples, because we have those job descriptions from those. So that's how we calibrate where our pay structure should be. We score these first, and then kind of build on those. Once we do, once we did that, we evaluated using our JET tool. So, oh, am I not loud enough?
We're streaming this meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry?
No, that's okay. So, these pick up.
Mark, is it turned on?
Yeah.
So, once we did the benchmark, we evaluated using our JET tool. The classifications you used before was Springstead Safe System. Our JET tool is very similar, it's just the points are different. One thing to note is why do you classify those positions? The points, that's always a question. That goes to that pay equity question. The state of Minnesota is the only state that requires pay equity, so they want to know, what do you class a job for points-wise? What's the minimum and the maximum you pay for it? How many men do you have in it, and how many women? So, it is a, was created in the late 80s, hasn't really been up to date since there, but they continue to make entities do it. If you don't do it, or you do it bad and fail, you will not receive LGA money. So, that is why it's important to do those classifications. Other than that, it just looks at jobs and says internally, are we paying them equally? So, the biggest point for our study is we want to look at what the external market's paying, make sure the job descriptions are up to date, and then we do that to make sure that you consistently will pass pay equity. We calibrate that wage scale, kind of provide a budget analysis, go and look at what we can do and the time we can do it, and then I'm here tonight with that final report. So I've been here once to kind of give the preliminary, what we found, kind of our intent. Like David said, we did do an appeals process for the classification employees. We had one. We did look at that, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. These are the benchmark communities that were approved. So here's where you are in relation to the benchmark salary. The black is the market, and the gold would be where East Grand Forks is currently. So, not all consistent. It looks like in some of them, you're under-market to start with. Some of them, you kind of reach, you are not. We did point out in the study, the fire and library are, if you look at here, would be under-market. We explained in the study that those provide additional services, so when you look at the pay, we had to look outside just the surface level that those would, to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. We were asked to look at Grand Forks. We know that they're a lot larger, but they're so close. They did provide the information just to kind of say where the dots are, where East Grand Forks is currently paying, and that's their min and max. Pretty much in line where, I mean, they're going to pay more, they can, they have other state laws that they have to go by, but that was something we looked at as a snapshot. Was not included in when we tallied and we did collaboration of the wage analysis. It was more of a snapshot to see how competitive you were, and if there were any areas you wanted to improve in. So the job classification, those are the points that decide kind of where the jobs go for grade levels. Our system specifically looks at education and experience needed for that position. If you have more, you don't get more points. That's part of the application process. I only look at the job position. I always say, if everyone at East Grand Forks were to win the lottery and we hired tomorrow, that's how we're classing those positions. What's needed in the position and current of that position. We look at problem solving. One thing that's a little bit different is we tie problem solving into the budget or the impact of results, to kind of say, what kind of problems are you solving? Do they affect my work directly, my division, my department, the overall city? So we tie that to the budget, so we want to look at those things, so it's kind of a matrix. And decision-making is similar, my decisions, how do they impact my work area, that. So we look at those a little bit different than most do, because we tie it to the budget number, and the, how big the department and if you supervise. Relationships would be, who do you communicate to? So, internal employees, outside council, vendors, contractors, other agencies? And what are you communicating to them? Is it just general information, like, here's your form, please fill it out? Are you giving them specific instructions? You're asking them to do something? Are you having to negotiate with them? Are you having to give them complex analysis on why something was decided and kind of explained? So we look at those types of things. Conditions of your work environment, so your physical, but we also look at your mental effort. So the accuracy and deadlines that are needed for your job are also looked at. And then the hazards of the job. So if you're driving, are you outside? Cold weather, those type of things are looked at. And then supervision. So we look at supervision in 14 levels. One, obviously, if you directly supervise employees, but we also look at, maybe you don't directly supervise, but you provide work direction to. You might do work scheduling, those type of things. We want to make sure you're getting some points for that supervision piece. So the classifications, I know when you look at the sheet, a couple of them went up, and that's probably where you first kind of think, why did they go up? Well, the systems aren't apples to apples. Our system is a little bit different. One thing with the safe system that you are currently using, it doesn't allow for the combination of experience. You either get education, or you get years of experience. You can't combine them. And a lot of times, job descriptions are written two-year degree and two-year of experience and/or any combination that's equivalent to. You can't point for that in their system. It's very rigid. Their grades actually have higher points than ours, so if we were to, their points are going to be 500 to 600, it's going to be a different grade than ours. So, we can't compare apples to apples. The positions that went up, most of them are supervisory or lead workers, and generally the area there, because we also work on safe with other entities, they're not considering the impact of end results. So, the decision-making like we do, it doesn't impact the budget, so I think that's an area. We have lower points, and again, the two systems are not apples to apples. So, when we look at your current position to the proposed, you're pretty much in line. We're not really changing much. You were doing very well in how you predicted and how your current step system were. We just wanted to make some adjustments to make sure the ones that were below-market, you had a couple, that we moved that minimum range for them, at least to the market, so when you hire them, they're making competitively what your area would be making. And then there were a couple that needed to be adjusted at the top. But for the most part, you were right in line where you should be on most of the jobs. We just had to make some, a few adjustments. So here, we looked at, there were 11 employees currently under the market min slightly, so we adjusted that. And that, just to, if you just did that, it would be $19,000. That's just to move those that are under the market min to the market min. And then, and the option two, kind of the cost of going into the system, if you provided a 2% COLA, you moved eligible employees into the system, that would be that total cost. Most of that cost is already, if you did nothing and kind of stayed with your old one, because you're still moving people in your system. It's just, our system is a little bit different. And then, we just talked about the last meeting, ongoing maintenance. One thing we do different is we want our clients to be satisfied with the work we do, but we also don't want to have to do these studies every three, five, or seven, or 10 years, or in some instances, 20 years, and have to play catch-up with the market. So, some of our clients are saying, "Hey, we would rather pay a small fee every year and have you look at a third of our job descriptions, make sure they're up to date, do those benchmark." So we're continuously in line with the market, so we don't have that gap. The other thing it allows is pay equity. We do those reports for you, so it's done by a consistent person. We think of it like you would your pavement improvement plan. You put money in to keep your infrastructure up to date. This would be your human capital, so that you're not having to adjust to the market at a later date, or the economy, or outside things. They're constantly being looked at and adjusted slightly, so your budget doesn't take that Questions?
Couple for right now, maybe some later. The average salary, average current salaries information, is that an average of people in that position, what their current salary is? Or is that an average of the, the minimum and maximum range?
It's what the market is currently paying that position.
Well, no, because you have, like on chart one, it's EGF current, or wait, the, isn't that EGF current salary?
Yep.
Is that?
So those would be the dots, and the line is what the market is paying that position.
Right, but it's the East Grand Forks current average salary for each job in comparison to the market minimum. So, is that?
Current average would be, if you have 10 patrol officers, we averaged what that would be.
So it's not the min and the maximum?
Nope.
It's not the, it's not the mean of their?
Nope. We wanted to get the average of what, in all of them, if you have 10 employees, what is that position paid by the city?
Because there could be some that are over, right?
Start, yep, exactly. It kind of, if you do the mean, then you're kind of right in the middle, and we're not attesting for any of those at the lower end or the higher end. If we average it out, we're getting a better, we have the most people, and here's what they're paid.
And then I guess the other question I have is, there are concerns about the, or this is back to the process and pay philosophy. On page two, it says, "There are concerns about the potential for future employee turnover and recruitment. Location, ability to pay is a challenge, how to retain current workforce." Obviously, those are challenges, but how does that, that get transferred into where it's weighted as far as market and all those type of things?
Well, I think the big one is recruitment issues. It's statewide. There are recruitment issues, especially in public health and police right now, just because of things that are going on. So, one of the things you want to make sure is you're competitive as possible, because you don't want to hire someone new and have them go through the training. You pay for all that training, and then they get up and leave, and now you've just lost that person, and their training, and now you have to rehire.
I guess, I understand, I'm, I'm wondering, does that philosophy translate to a certain weighting? Like, we, you should be 80% of max, or you should be what?
Of the market?
Right.
That's totally up to the city, the council.
Because I guess, part of my thing is, I do take a little bit, while that is a concern, I don't, I, I wouldn't label it a concern. I think you're always cognizant of that, but I don't, I would think that most, especially in, not every classification, I would say, there's a lot of people that have been here for a long time, and that turnover isn't necessarily a huge deal. So, I would, I just want to make sure that we aren't modifying the, the rate, or the, the expectation of what you need to do to, to maintain people if it's not necessary.
No, this strictly looked at the market. Pay philosophy though can go to the council. The council can say, "We want to be at 75% of the market, 85, 90, whatever." That's a pay philosophy that I can't create. That has to be determined. We strictly looked at the market and said, "Based on the market, here's where you should be." You have been following it, you don't have a big jump, so kudos to you for following that. We just wanted to make sure those 11 position, or people, I shouldn't say they weren't positions, it was people in those, aren't bumped up, because why would I apply here if I could go next door or somewhere else when it's at the minimum? So we're getting them in the door, because you will have, you do have a lot of tenure, but that also means you're going to have retirement. So we want to make sure that we can fill those positions, and we don't have a hard time recruiting. I know, I have only been out of city government for two years, and when I started, I had 150 applicants for police, and when I left, I had 50. And that was in the metro area. So, it is an issue that we're well aware of and our clients are. We just want to make sure with your high longevity, you have a plan, how you're going to recruit.
All right, I'm just looking at those people.
Yep.
And so if you take, like, the patrol officer position, there's four.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm assuming that those four are our newest hires. So, I'm just wondering if, you know, so I'm just saying, like, if in three years, they're going to be within the mean, do we want to accelerate that now, so then all of a sudden, we're going to be above the mean?
Well, that's why we look at the min and the max. We're not creating a max, so you'll be above. That's not our intent. But we want to make sure that you, those four that are below, they could easily go somewhere else, or the next time you have an application, are you going to get equal or less applicants? We just want to make sure that you're being competitive for your recruitment.
I believe one of the big factors for patrol officers is that for the lowest point system, they go from a grade 14 to a grade 15, and they're all towards the bottom of the scale, so I think that's where the big factor comes in. Three of those four just reached their one-year anniversary, so in reality, the impact will be somewhat less than that.
Right. I just, and like I said, I, it just, it seems like we're taking the people and, it seems like we're, our steps probably progress, if, if, I don't, how many patrol officers do we have?
Three-ish shift, or perhaps?
Twelve.
Twelve?
I think it's twelve.
Twelve to, twelve, fourteen. So, I mean, I'm just saying, so.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. So you have eight of them that are above the limit. So what I'm saying is, to me, that says that our steps increase at a rate that would put them into the mean faster, even though they're, they might start lower.
Maybe I'll ask this question. Are you worried that if we bump it up to the minimum with COLA, that we way past the mean faster than they would normally?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is, I mean, to me, if you just let it progress out, those four will, in four years, they'll be at or whatever the mean. So why, yes, maybe we need to bump our bottom up a little bit at some point, but it doesn't seem, I just think it's more of a range thing. Our bottom is probably just a little bit lower than the mean, and our top is probably right at the max or whatever. We have people that are progressing through there in time, and this is just the snapshot we have. And at this time, we have, like you said, we have a lot of new, new guys or gals, and, you know, their steps are probably just bigger, you know? So, and I don't know how that relates to the new compensation plan, but I guess, I'd, I'd look more at, you know, it just throws darts at certain points in time. I would rather look at, what is our min and max salary versus that mean, versus what the, what it is currently? Because, like I said, our, we have another steps, and we probably progress through those steps more rapidly than.
And I think that's what we did, because the last time you looked at it was 2012. So we're looking back six years to say, has anything changed, or has our system kept up to what it was supposed to do? For the most part, it did. You don't have a huge gap to fill. That's great. But if we would have continued looking at that, we would have gotten that min a lot sooner and know that, hey, we're a little lower here, or because we have pointing, I think that was a part of it. Your patrol, your sergeants and your, were lower on the Springstead than on ours. I can't account for how they did it. I think that was part of it. If they would have been at the right classification, you wouldn't have had an issue.
I guess my point is, is if this was done four years from now, these four people would have been right in the range.
Our goal is that if it's done four years from now, we're right where we're supposed to be, because we keep, we look at the market on a more ongoing basis than just waiting six years. So we won't have this conversation. That's my goal. I don't, I, I don't make money doing this, but I don't think it makes sense to pay for a big study, and then you do it, and then you kind of wait, and then you come back to it, and then now you have a gap to fill. I think it would be better just to keep that ongoing maintenance. And I'm just saying that as a former administrator, not as a consultant who.
Related to the, you saying three or at the year, one-year mark, is that, was that factored into the, what the cost would be to the city? Terry, could you answer that?
Yes. When I put the information together for Tessa, we looked at, at 1231 of 2018, where are all staff going to be so that for when we implement them and for the budget and everything, it's what it would be on the new pay plan?
Well, what?
That's factored in there.
The impact that we have on the budget we're looking at has those factors in there?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
But I believe the biggest reason there's a significant bump for those folks is because they are towards the bottom of the pay grade, and, and with the increase of the grade from 14 to 15, that's where.
I just want to make sure it's reflective in the numbers you have in your budget. That's what.
Other questions? I was just, I was looking at those patrol ones, to find out what the actual cost was.
Any questions at this time? Mr. Vedder, I, this.
Concerning the pay equity, are we in line with state guidelines?
We passed.
Passed.
Yep, and, yep. So, we will, if this is approved, then we move, we'll do a pay equity test to show you how the new score will fill out, if you want to see where you were and where you will be. The thing is, it was harder this time, because we had the housing authority that was separate, and we had to get rid of that and kind of combine those. So it was a little bit more difficult on this pay equity, but I don't foresee any problems. We're right in line with where you were before. I think it'll only help you, so.
So, even if we don't adopt any of your proposals, we still in line?
Yeah, I already did your pay equity for you, you got that out of me.
Okay.
You passed now for three years.
Okay.
The important, the thing that's important to remember, that is that, that's, that has nothing to do with the external, that's just, are we comparable internally?
Yep. Like I said, that's based on those classifications points. It really has no bearing, are you really paying fairly? It really doesn't, because it looks at male-dominated jobs and sees if you have any women in those. It's an archaic system.
Yes, and are the, the traditionally female-dominated positions are, are they weighted the same as if it were a male?
Right. And they're okay if you pay me more, they're not okay if you pay David more than me, and we're in the same position. That's how the system works. I, I didn't make it up. There are things to try to get rid of it, so if you ever talk to a legislator, let them know that it's an odd thing, because if we were in North Dakota, we wouldn't have it, or if we were in Wisconsin.
Yeah, they like to hang that LGA thing in areas, so.
Yeah. Well, that's their carrot, yep.
Hurt in the stick.
Yeah.
Anything else have anything? I don't think so. Mr. Murphy, have you anything to add to that, sir?
No, I guess, other than, we're not, tonight, we don't have any motion before you to take any action. This was to do the presentation. This will then be brought forward for adoption at a future meeting. Maybe we'll put on the next work session if there's any follow-up questions on that, then we'll move it to the following meeting for adoption.
So, when you present it, what are we going to be approving? Just the study results, or are we approving other factors that have been presented through the study?
Well, I guess what I will be doing is, I will be bringing it forward that we approve and adopt the recommendations from the wage study.
Would include adjusting pay for individuals?
Correct.
Are you going to have that as, in different groupings, or are you going to just all or nothing?
Well, that's part of the reason why I would like to have it on the work session next as well. We could certainly discuss that here as, as well. I mean, maybe you don't have to put it in the next work session. I guess it depends from the direction I get from the council here. Firstly, I would move it forward as in one group, rather than individual groups, unless I hear otherwise.
Would be the pros and cons of either or, I guess?
The pros and cons of, of doing either or. If we did, well, if we, if we did certain positions and not others, I don't know the, the total impact of it, but the potential, one of the potentials would be throwing off our pay equity eventually. The other one would be just a, a morale issue, some getting some and others didn't, based on, based on the.
I'm talking not about the, I'm talking about, there's a, there's the bare minimum one, and then there's the.
I think the bare minimum would be to move those ones that are below minimum.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is are you going to present?
You're not saying.
Those, I'm not saying, we're going to take the HR and the.
Okay. Apologize, I misunderstood that.
Yeah.
I think that would be, that would be my recommendation, if you looked at the bare minimum, to get those people up first, because you could lose those. Then, the COLA, you can, I don't know where you are in unions, but that could be adjusted. Moving them into the system, you already have a cost for payroll if you do nothing, because you already have a step system, so that cost is factored in.
Well, I guess I can answer that a little bit. I'm not sure, maybe I didn't go through this with you, Tess, you might not be aware of this, but we do have a three-year contract with our unions.
Oh, that's right.
We're in the first year of it. However, the wage for the 2019 is based on the results of this study, so that we had the chance for, once we got that, that they could do a re-opener for the wages based on, on what this is. So, that's where we're at with that.
The opportunity of, let's say we don't adopt it, they come back for a re-opener, meet with the union, and nothing resolved by the December timeline to get it approved.
Then the wages would be frozen at 2018 levels until such time as we settled with them on their re-opener.
Retro, back to January 1?
Yes. Unless, unless you negotiate it otherwise, I will say, I, I don't really recall ones where they started at that point. I mean, it's almost, all the ones I'm aware of go back to, retroactive to January 1st.
Make it clear.
I think it would be helpful to bring it to the work session for further discussion. I think there are still some unanswered questions in all of our minds, and a couple of us are not here. And it wouldn't slow it down any, because it's still going to be approved at a, at And it wouldn't slow it down any, because it's still going to be approved at a, at a full council meeting. So, I'd like to see that, if, just as a matter of suggestion.
Proper way to do it? And if there's any other questions from anybody?
And then what I guess I can do is, I, I can bring forward at the work session, the impact of, of the different options.
That'll do to percolate a couple more questions for me for next time.
If we do need you next time, I think we could, we could Skype you in, rather than make you drive up here.
That would be appreciated. Well, it's a nice drive.
Not to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move.
By Grouse, a second by Riappel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion is carried, means adjourn.